I'm, I'm in. So I see, you should see Sierra and iPhone two nine seven, which is me. There's, there's years. Okay, alright, so I am in the right meeting. Okay, just making sure. I don't know why.
Good morning and welcome citizens of Douglas County. The March third, twenty twenty five work session of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners will come to order. Role call. County Clerk, could you please take the role for the record?
Yes ma'am. Commissioner District One, Henry Mitchell. Commissioner District Two, Whitney Kenner Jones. She is not present this morning. Commissioner District Three, Martin Raxton. He is also not present. They are both at training. Commissioner District Four, Vice Chair Mark Alcarez.
Present.
Dr. Ramona Jackson Jones, Chairman.
Present. Thank you so much Clerk. We do have a core of Board of Commissioners. Clerk, do we have anyone sign up for public comment?
No ma'am, we did not.
Okay. This morning, we have two presentations to come before us. And our first, our first presentation this morning is from Douglasville Douglas County Water and Sew Authority. We have with us Mr. Brian Keel is here to present. Good morning.
Good morning all. Thank you so much for having us here this morning. I am Brian Keel, the Deputy Director of Engineering, and with me today is Mr. Gil Charaus, our Executive Director.
Good morning.
Can you all see my slides? Awesome.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. So I'm gonna give you a, a update on some of the neat projects that we have going on this morning. And of course, the biggest thing that we have going on right now is our reservoir expansion. Those of you that were here in two thousand seven might remember that that was the worst drought we've ever had in the history of the state of Georgia. What you see here are a couple of pictures of our Dog River Reservoir from our recreation complex. And if you look especially at the picture on the right of the screen, that, that was the Dog River. You could step across it. It was that dry. And so we are undertaking this reservoir expansion, not because of changes in the forecasted future water needs of the county, but rather to protect us against another drought like this. So right now, our reservoir covers about one hun- excuse me, two hundred and sixty acres, and it holds one point nine billion gallons of water. After the expansion, it's going to cover six hundred acres and hold six point five mil- billion gallons. So we are more than tripling the volume of the reservoir, because that's what our studies show. Our community with anticipated growth is going to need in fifty years from now, if we have another drought like two thousand seven. The reservoir expansion actually encompasses several projects that have to occur concurrently. We have to build a couple of new intake structures, a new dam spillway, raise the Highway one sixty six bridge over the reservoir, rebuild our recreational complex, and build a new road to access the new dam spillway and intake structures. We've been working with a construction manager at risk for the past year on developing pricing and a schedule for the construction of all of these projects. And in December, just before Christmas, they presented us with an estimated cost of four hundred fifty million dollars to build all of these projects. We told them at that cost, we are going to look very hard at other future water supply options. And if they wanted to build this reservoir expansion for us, they needed to bring that number down. So within the past few weeks now, they have delivered a number of three hundred ninety million to us. And we, we did have to make some concessions in our scope to get there. But we have looked at the number with our rate model and with our financial metrics, and we believe that we can do this. So in the past couple of months, we have gone on a bit of an emotional roller coaster ride from thinking, oh man, this just isn't gonna happen, to now, hey, we can do this, let's go build it. So we're very excited about that. We are planning on finalizing the numbers, the cost numbers and the schedules, and presenting that to our Board of Directors at the end of this month, asking them to approve construction contracts in April, and then hopefully move to construction starting in May. So while the reservoir expansion is, is the biggest sexiest thing we've got going on right now, it's certainly not the only thing we've been doing at WSA. We did recently complete the construction of about three miles of twenty inch diameter water main on Lee Road in connection with the DOT's Lee Road Widening Project. This is going to allow us to pump more water from our water plant in the central part of the county out to the Lithia Springs area in the northeast part of the county where we have a lot of our, our greatest water demands right now. On the wastewater side, we have completed several projects at our plants to increase capacity across our system, including aerator upgrades at our south central and north side wastewater treatment plants, replacing the thirty seven year old original aeration equipment at our Sweetwater Creek wastewater treatment plant. We're actually still underway on that one. And we recently completed construction of a force main to connect to Cobb County's sewer system to allow us to pump over three million gallons a day of wastewater to their system for treatment. All of these projects together have increased our system wide wastewater treatment capacity by over nine million gallons a day, which has more than doubled our system's wastewater treatment capacity just within the past two years. We've also completed some, some regional sewer extension projects recently. Y'all may recall about three years ago, we completed construction of the Caps Ferry Lift Station and Force Main Project to allow us to serve sewer to about forty five hundred acres between Highway five and the reservoir up to Highway one sixty six. These areas do include Fox Hall and the Preserve Life Development. This is an area that the, the community planners at the county and the Economic Development Authority told us was going to be the next area for development. And so we went in there and we provided the trunk sewer system to enable that development. I'll take this opportunity to remind everybody that WSA doesn't pick where development's gonna go. We don't pick what kind of development's gonna go there. We defer to the, the appropriate community planning officials, and then we'll go in and build these regional sewer systems to facilitate that development. Likewise, about a year and a half ago, we completed construction of the Lee Road Sewer to serve the Lee Road Tad area. Of course, this area includes the, the Lions Gate Movie Studios as well as the Trails Mixed Use Development. This was kind of a cool example of partnering with private and public agencies, because WSA had an agreement with the developer of the Trails in which they funded some of this sewer system because they needed it for their development. And we also worked very closely with the county's DOT on the Spine Road Development to make sure we got in there and got the sewer in the right place at the right time, so that we're not in there bumping heads with their contractor trying to put the road and the sewer in at the same time. So I, I think this was a big success story. And then looking ahead, again, you know, deferring to the, the community planners have told us that the next area for development is gonna be what we call the Northwest Corridor. This is the portion of the county between downtown Douglasville and Villa Rica. And yeah, Lithia Springs is kinda filled up. This is the next space that developers are looking at. And so we've been asked to develop a conceptual plan for how to sewer the area, and we have come up with one that, that you see on the map here. It's basically a series of daisy chains of pumping stations along Cedar Mountain Road fed by gravity lines to serve areas to the south of there. And then another series of pumping stations to connect to our existing sewer at the Mason Creek Schools Lift Station on the south side of I twenty to serve the area kinda between Highway seventy eight and I twenty. So these, we will, we won't build this all at once. This is a, a very extensive system. But as these developments come in, we will fund portions of these trunk systems and leverage any, any dollars that we can from the developers to get this system put in place as the needs arise. So tho- those are some of the exciting things that, that we've been doing, some of the projects we've been doing. If, if y'all will allow me just a couple of more minutes, I do wanna touch on one final subject, and that is data centers. If y'all have been keeping up with the news lately, I'm sure that you realize Atlanta has become a hotbed of data center development. And here in Douglas County, we have sure, surely had our share of them coming in. This screen shows a aerial view of Lithia Springs, the eastern part of the county between twenty fourteen and twenty twenty four. And I was shocked when I saw the explosion of rooftops just in that ten year period. Ten years ago, even really five years ago, most of this was warehousing, distribution centers. Within the past couple of years and continuing today, it is all data centers. That is relevant to us because some of these data centers request a large volume of water for cooling purposes. And y'all have entertained several such zoning requests recently for these data centers. We have been here to field questions about those, those water needs for these data centers, and it's a very hot topic around our office lately. As an example, we're currently working with three data center developments here in Lithia Springs, together that are requesting almost three million gallons a day of cooling water. To put that in perspective, that's almost a quarter of our entire community's water demand every day. That's a lot for our system. And so if we were to tell these guys, sure, you, you can have that water, that would effectively cut the useful life of our new reservoir that we're about to spend three hundred ninety billion, excuse me, three hundred ninety million dollars on, from about fifty years to about eleven years. So that's a nonstarter. We're not going to sacrifice our community's future water supply, our community's future growth potential, just to serve a few industrial developments. What I like to tell our friends in the, the development side of things is, the answer is not no. The answer is yes, but here's what you have to do to get it. And so we're working with these data center developers on what I think are some pretty cool innovative ideas to be able to serve them the water that they need without sacrificing our future water supply. And this last map I'm gonna show you guys has a couple of those options illustrated. The first one is a connection to the Cobb County Marietta Water Authority. That's actually our backup water supply. We have a, we have current connections to this water supply right now. If something happens in our system, if something happens at our water plant, and we're not able to put out the water that, that our community needs, we can open a few valves and pull water in from Cobb Marietta, and everything is fine. With a few system upgrades, we could increase the amount of water that we're able to pull in from Cobb Marietta to serve these data centers. That's a good workable solution. We still don't like that as a long term solution, because you're still using potable water, drinking water, for an industrial use. You don't need water that's been treated all the way to drinking water standards for cooling purposes. So alongside this, we're also working with our friends to the east in Cobb County on developing a reuse plant at their South Cobb Wastewater Treatment Plant, which you see over on the right side of the picture there. That's, it's about at I twenty in the Chattahoochee River. That plant treats over thirty million gallons a day of wastewater, and they discharge the treated effluent directly to the river. If we could build a reuse plant at the end of that wastewater plant, we could pump further treated reuse water back to Douglas County for these data centers and possibly other customers to use as cooling water or for other industrial water needs. So we're pursuing that as a long term solution to providing cooling water. I should have mentioned, these improvements will not be on the backs of our rate payers. They will not be paid for by your constituents. They will be paid one hundred percent by these data centers. However, we see possible opportunities to increase the capacity of these improvements. And if we're able to, well, for example, if the data centers need three million gallons a day of reuse water, if we could build that plant and system to provide, say, six million gallons a day or twelve million gallons a day, we could bring additional reuse water into the county to serve our other customers. Maybe even get some of our existing industrial customers that are currently using our drinking water off the drinking water and onto reuse, thereby just further expanding the lifespan of our drinking water system. So if we can do something like that, we very well may invest public funds to, to expand the capacity of some of these solutions. So with that, that's all I have prepared for you guys this morning. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you so much, Brian. Board of Commissioners, should we have any questions? Mr. Keel, Commissioner Mitchell, you have the floor.
Okay, yes. Whew, that was a lot. It was good. It was good.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. So, so the fifty year potential growth that you guys are anticipating. What are, what are those numbers? When it comes to population?
Sure.
Business, or is it, what, what, what numbers and what's the formula that you're coming up with on that?
Sure. So, population more or less is expected to double. And, and we didn't do that. We're not experts at, at prognosticating growth and stuff. We, we actually rely on numbers generated by the, the State Office of Planning and Budget, as well as the Atlanta Regional Commission that tell us what is the expected population and employment growth in our county. Based on that, we have determined that in fifty years, the, the water demand is going to be twenty three million gallons a day.
Okay.
Well, before the drought of two thousand seven, I would stand up here and tell you our current one point nine billion gallon reservoir will provide twenty three million gallons a day. We thought we were good until the two thousand seven drought.
Right. Got it. And, and so you're saying, you guys, the cost, you came up with an estimated cost of four fifty, four hundred and fifty million, not four hundred and fifty, okay, four hundred and fifty million. And then you now came back with a potential cost of probably three ninety and, and meals of what you potentially looking at the cost. What change, what, what, what the adjustments that you guys are making to kinda, are we still getting the, the best drinking water in the state of Georgia, or are we gonna be losing because of the reduction?
Yes, we're, we're absolutely still getting the best drinking water in the state of Georgia. We are not compromising on the quality or the quantity. We take what I'll call a, a belt and suspenders and more suspenders approach to water supply. We like redundancy. We like backups to our backups. One of the big concessions that we made to reduce that cost number was eliminating the second backup intake structure that we had planned to build. We already have full redundancy at our primary intake structure, meaning we have, we have enough pumps and enough motors and enough electrical gear in there. If any of those components fail, we've got enough to pick up the full load. We were planning to build a second backup intake in the, in the very small event that something catastrophic happened and it took out the entire intake. That would be like a tornado landing on the building.
Right.
Something very small likelihood of happening, but catastrophic. As we investigated the, the cost of building a second intake, not just the capital cost, but also the, the operating and maintenance cost for all, you know, all of these giant pumps and motors and electrical gear, they have to be maintained, they have to be pulled out, rebuilt, replaced on some basis. So, so there's a significant operating cost there too. As we looked at that, we realized no other water system in Georgia has that. And so, you know, is, is the cost of it really worth it? And is there something else that we could do to provide that backup to our backup? We realized, yeah, there is. We are still going to build pipes to another location on the reservoir and build a, I'm gonna call it a manifold, to which we can bring in some portable pumps and hook them up in very short order. If something catastrophic ever happens to our main intake, we can hook up portable pumps here and keep the system operating within a matter of hours, probably within a day, for a small fraction of the cost of building a whole new intake with all new pumps, et cetera. That's the biggest change that we made. We also made a few other smaller changes to the scope. We also found some, our, I should say, our construction manager found some efficiencies in means and methods of construction, constructing the dam, doing the clearing work, some of those items that
Okay.
didn't require changes on our part.
But we didn't compromise?
No, sir.
Good, good. And, and the other question here. I, I thought the data centers that we are looking at now and in the future, that, you know, the potentials, I, I thought they didn't use the same type of water. I thought that there was a difference in the type of water for cooling that it is for drinking.
If, if they had their druthers, they would use our drinking water.
Understood.
So that's why we, we are kind of forcing this alternative solution on them. And I, and I should have clarified before as well, a lot of the data centers that, that you all have heard come in before you, for zoning cases lately, are not proposing to use water for cooling. A lot of them, they use a, we call a closed loop system.
Yeah, closed.
And, and they don't wanna use any more water than a, than a warehouse. So those really aren't a concern to us at all.
Okay.
It's, there's just a handful of them that, that do wanna use water for cooling, and they want a lot of it. And so some systems, I believe, do, do serve them. They're, they're drinking water for that purpose. We've just, we've drawn a line and said, no, we, we don't have that kind of resource available, so you're going to have to do something else.
So the ones that we've passed, cause I know we kinda rely on you guys, you know, to, to reassure us that you guys can service these guys when it comes to water, you know, when it comes to power, Georgia Power and whomever else. So we are good in that vein, I would hope.
Yes, sir. We are absolutely good.
Okay. Okay. That, cause I know you've come up on many of occasions answering that question, so I, I just, you know, cause you mentioned data center. I, I don't wanna put a scare in the community side of things, because that was one of the, the key factors. And I'm assuming some of us kinda weighed on as to saying whether or not we would pass or fail this type of a project. The project that's going, I know we, we've got the one that's the Lee Road Connector to Fairborn Road.
Yes, sir.
We're working on and working toward the other one that's gonna be the Lee Road Connector that's gonna go to seventy eight.
Yes, sir.
What, if any, are you guys looking at that particular connector, is, or there's gonna be a need for any updates or for the infrastructure when it comes to water that's going in that direction?
So the, the one on seventy eight is, it's kind of this map that I, I had thrown up there that
Okay.
Seventy eight is, it's kind of in the middle of the map there. And we do have an extensive conceptual sewer plan worked out. It's gonna develop in phases as these projects come in. In fact, I think we are entertaining requests from a couple of data centers right now. One, I believe, is, is scheduled to come before planning and zoning sometime this summer, that are gonna be developing in this area. And they would potentially contribute to the first part of this system. The first lift station, force main, and, and one of the gravity lines to kind of start what we're calling this daisy chain. And then as developments get approved and continue out farther west along the corridor, if, you know, again, if that's what the, the planning community determines is appropriate, then we would continue to work with those developers and continue to expand that system to enable, basically get the sewer in place by the time they need it.
Okay. And I, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but are you confident as to where WSA sits in this moment of time? When it comes to water and sewer in Douglas County, our infrastructure is A, B, C, D, or F?
Absolutely. We are A plus.
A plus?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. Good enough. I, thank you again, and I yield back my.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Any other questions? Vice Chair?
I'd just have one. You were talking about raising the one sixty six bridge. I'm assuming you're gonna have to elevate that road also, cause it's pretty flat to right there with Reese that bridge, so you're gonna have to elevate that road as well, correct?
Yes, sir. We do need to all over, elevate several, several hundred feet of what we call the approaches on either end of the bridge to kind of gradually, you know, bring it up. So it is more than just a bridge raising.
And I'm, I'm assuming you guys, are, are you gonna build that beside the current bridge, or are you gonna shut down one sixty six? Cause that's a
No, we're not gonna shut it down. We're gonna build it just to the north side of one sixty six. We actually did this the last time we raised the reservoir. If you're traveling westbound on one sixty six, before you get Um, if you're traveling westbound on 166, before you get to the bridge, you'll see a clearing off to the left that used to be the old 166. And that goes down to what used to be the old bridge that was demolished. We're gonna do the same thing now. We're gonna build the new bridge. Again, if you travel in westbound, it'll be on the right side as you're approaching the reservoir. Um, but we're going to build that parallel to the existing bridge while the existing bridge is still in service. And then once the new one is completed, we will shift traffic from the existing roadway over to it. So there will be no interruption of, of traffic on Highway 166. Uh, it'll be just a, you know, one day of shift.
Okay. All right. Now I yield back my chair.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. I have one question for you regarding recycling of waters and water. I believe we have one data center that utilizes recycled water. Could you explain that process to the Board of Commissioners?
Sure. So we do have one, um, one data center customer that is on, we do have reuse water. Uh, we treat it at a plant that's connected to our Sweetwater Creek wastewater treatment plant. And we have a contract with one of the older data centers here in the county to supply them 100% of the treated reuse water from that plant. Uh, we can treat up to 3 million gallons a day of reuse water. And, um, it's, it's a real success story. Uh, I, I can tell you guys, it's Google. Um, it's public knowledge. But, um, they, they have used that as a model for all of their data center developments across the world since that time. This was 2007, 2008 when they developed this one. This was the first of its kind. Uh, and it's a real success story for them and for us. We would love to be able to do that for other data centers coming into the county, but we're all out of wastewater. We, we already make, uh, beneficial reuse of 100% of the wastewater that we treat in the county. We just don't have any more to treat for reuse. So that's why we're looking to our partners to the east, Cobb County. They have way more raw wastewater stock than we do. And, you know, just a much bigger source that we could treat to reuse standards and bring back into Douglas for, uh, for use with other such customers.
Thank you. Any other questions, Board? Great. Thank you so much, Brian. Great job. Thank you. Board of Commissioners, we have our next presentation, um, coming forth is our E-911 Director, uh, Katrina. I can't get it together this morning hardly. And she will be speaking regarding, uh, the Next Generation 911 and ES, is it ESInet?
ESInet, yes, ma'am.
Okay. You have the floor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, County Administrator. So this morning I will be, uh, talking to you about Next Generation 911, which is essentially the next iteration of 911 services. So for those that don't know, 911 turned 57 last month. Uh, and so when 911 first began some 57 years ago, we started off with basic 911. And then we moved into enhanced 911, hence the E-911. And now we're moving towards Next Generation 911. And just, uh, for your, uh, information, we already have elements of what is Next Generation 911 within our current 911 system. So for example, we have text to 911. We also have a system called Carbine, which allows for that video, uh, conferencing uh, with the actual callers. And we have Responder Connect, which allows us to then, uh, have those videos, uh, live streamed to the responders uh, so that they can, uh, essentially see what is happening with calls before they arrive, which is, uh, very important. ESInet is probably the biggest part of that because it actually replaces the 57-year-old 911 infrastructure. So what is Next Generation 911? And specifically, uh, today we are talking about ESInet. It replaces that analog 911 legacy infrastructure, which means that those copper lines that 911 currently operates under will be decommissioned. It includes a five, a rule of five nines, and that's 99.999% uptime, which means that if your 911 system should fail, it should only fail at a rate of 5 minutes and 26 seconds within a year. Telecommunications companies will not, uh, support what we currently have in our legacy 911 infrastructure indefinitely. Uh, when I first came before the Board of Commissioners in, um, May of 2024, uh, we did not have an end date. And so the Georgia Emergency Communications Authority has, uh, updated us. And there are plenty of updates, which is why I placed this item, uh, on the agenda today, uh, because now they are, they are providing us a date. So GICA, uh, has most recently provided us a date that those, that legacy infrastructure will not, uh, be supported beyond 2029. And so that, that is coming up on us very quickly here. And we have to future-proof our emergency services, not only in Douglas County, but throughout the state of Georgia and throughout the entire United States. Uh, right now, the state of Georgia, uh, is a little lagging behind a little bit in the southeast because many states, uh, have already moved towards, uh, Next Generation 911. Uh, one of the, the biggest, um, proponents and, uh, a great, uh, story of ESInet is the state of North Carolina with Hurricane Helene. Uh, when their 911 centers went down, they were able to immediately come back up because of this, uh, new technology. So there is also a lot that's moving in the state as far, as far as legislation. Georgia House Bill 423 was, uh, recently introduced, uh, as the Next Generation 911. And its purpose is to modernize our emergency services response system by implementing ESInet throughout the state of Georgia. The key provisions are, uh, Next Generation 911 services to establish advanced 911 capabilities, including that text, video, and data communications. It expands GICA's control and authority over, uh, the statewide, uh, ESInet system. Uh, it expands their board, and they also, uh, will enforce those standards of compliance throughout the state. Uh, this was passed, uh, by the House Public Safety and Homeland Security Committee on 2/19/2025. And Friday before, uh, I left, uh, from work, uh, it had passed the House. So it is now, uh, entering into the, the Senate. Uh, there's also other legislation. There's House Bill 578, where, uh, they are increasing a 911, um, fee increase, a fee increase proposal. And Senate Bill 282, which will provide for a 911 fee study. So our key benefits, uh, GIS-based routing calls are directed to, uh, correct, to the correct 911 center based on real-time location, and this reduces response delays. Uh, all addresses will be entered in a statewide database. So for example, if their 911 system went down in Chatham County, which is in Savannah, uh, we could potentially, uh, handle their calls in Douglas County. And that is, that's the, the, the purpose of this. Uh, there's the redundancy and reliability piece. If one center goes down to a disaster, calls are automatically rerouted to another 911 center seamlessly. Uh, cyber security, cyber security and system resilience protects against, uh, cyber threats and ensures continuous operations. Our infrastructure that was built 57 years ago was not built in mind with the cyber, uh, attacks that we now, uh, potentially face. Uh, interoperability with regional and statewide agency. It enables that collaboration piece and a coordinated emergency response effort. So let's just take a look, uh, very closely at our legacy 911 networks versus ESInet. Our legacy 911, uh, network is analog-based, uh, slow call routing. Um, ESInet is IP-based, which means that the call routing is much faster. Um, in the past, our legacy 911 network is limited to voice calls only. Now, there have been some workarounds, and of course, we can now receive text. But there are some, all 911 centers are not created equal throughout the state of Georgia. So there are some 911 centers that don't have that ability. Um, and ESInet supports text, video, and real-time data. Uh, with that legacy system, calls routed by area code, not necessarily location. Uh, with ESInet, they are routed by exact GPS location. Uh, with our legacy network, our legacy network is vulnerable to system failures. And when those failures happen, sometimes they can take hours, sometimes days to, uh, come back up. Uh, with ESInet, there is built-in redundancy and that there's that cyber security piece. With our legacy network, it's difficult to transfer calls across agencies. Uh, for example, we had a call, uh, some years ago, um, prior to my working for Douglas County, but, um, I'm very familiar with the call, um, where we, we had an emergency situation and the call originated in DeKalb County. DeKalb did not have that ability to immediately transfer to Douglas County. That call had to be routed to Fulton County and then Fulton to Douglas. ESInet takes away that. So there is seamless interagency communication. Funding, and this is the big one. So, uh, ESInet requires a significant upfront investment. The state is aware, uh, and that is why they are working towards a statewide, uh, network to, because they know that, um, that it is very costly. Uh, this includes the cost of upgrading and replacing our existing communications infrastructure. Um, they are asking for, uh, a first tier of appropriations of 5 million to 8.3 million, but that is statewide. Uh, there are ongoing costs beyond the initial setup. GICA is proposing a fee study and hence, um, House, uh, Senate Bill 282, uh, for implementation. The largest expenses are those community fiber studies. There are already about five metro Atlanta 911 centers who have already migrated and, or, and/or are migrating to ESInet due to several factors. Uh, ESInet costs are contingent upon population, and so as population increases, so does the cost of ESInet. Uh, and complete migration takes approximately three years or more. They are trying to get that, uh, down, uh, perhaps especially since now we, we now have a date of 2029. There are about 16 communities in Georgia, uh, statewide that have migrated and/or are migrating. And lastly, the Georgia Communications Authority understands that not all stakeholders have the adequate resources. And they are looking into statewide feasibility, uh, contracts. Uh, the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia is urging Congress to pass legislation that includes support for Next Generation 911 and ESInet implementation as a legislative priority. Uh, Georgia is one of 11 states throughout the United States that has not made significant strides. So what is the fiber study? Because this is where the expenses will, um, will mainly, uh, hold uh, with Next Generation 911. Uh, with that fiber study, we are trying to establish two things, the most cost-effective and the most technologically sound path. And of course, we, uh, we spoke in our Public Safety Committee meeting about, you know, we already have some fiber, but is it the right fiber? So we have to look at our existing fiber optic infrastructure. What fiber do we already have in place in the county? And then, uh, from that, are there network gaps? So what areas, uh, does that fiber lack? And where is the additional infrastructure needed? Uh, we have to look at bandwidth requirements, ensuring that the county has sufficient speed and capacity to handle the Next Generation 911 traffic. Um, and then we look at the resiliency and the redundancy, identifying potential failover, so emergency calls will remain uninterrupted so that we can meet that rule of five nines. And then a cost analysis determining the expense of the new fiber installation, leasing options, or partnerships with service providers. So, uh, the reason why I wanted to bring this to you is because, um, at this juncture, there needs to be some discussion as to which route we decide on in our county as far as our next steps. Um, so just some things to consider. Um, if we go ahead, uh, on our own, uh, prior to a statewide initiative, of course, there will be faster implementation, uh, with the ability to potentially tie into the state's system once it becomes available. But understanding that, uh, there may, that the, excuse me, the state may come with cost savings, but there may be some implementation delays because we have to understand, again, that not all 911 centers are created equal. And so some of those 911 centers that are not even quite at the E, the enhanced 911, will have to be brought up to that as we implement throughout the state. So that's, uh, something that we need to understand. Uh, if we go into a statewide system, there may be some very specific needs that locally, uh, we want to address, and those, those needs might be overlooked. However, with the statewide system, there will definitely be a level of interoperability because we will be tied with the state. Um, dependency risk on the state. You know, do we want to have our own ESInet? Or do we want to be, uh, totally tied into the state's system, which means that everything that the state, uh, provides, we will, we will have to do. We will have to abide by, um, which will essentially, uh, mean that we might lose our local control. However, uh, we also might have some resource limitations because a statewide system should come with all the bells and whistles, and we need to be aware of that. And there are potential higher costs because the state, uh, will undoubtedly have that legislative report, support, uh, to, um, funding opportunities that are available to the state that might not be available to a local jurisdiction. And so those are just some considerations, uh, that we need to look into. But again, if we decide to go ahead and implement ESInet on our own, it will come with the ability to tie into the statewide system. However, these are just the things that we need to be aware of, uh, if we, uh, were to wait on a statewide initiative. Any questions?
Any questions, Board? For our director. Commissioner Mitchell, you have the floor.
I guess I'll chime in. You know, we can't let you get out of here without, without any questions.
Yes, sir.
So, well, I, I'll go from the, from, uh, the last part of your statement. Where are you and your team feeling how we should address this state versus local, uh, resource when it comes to E-911? Should we look closer and try to align, align with the state based on the cost factors here? Or should we move on our own? And would hopefully the increase, cause it's at the Senate now, that bill is at the Senate now,
Yes.
that's stating that there will be somewhat of an increase? Don't know what the numbers are, or, uh, I don't know if you, you know the numbers, but what that looks like. So what do you, what do you feel comfortable with the recommendation, I guess I would say?
So it's two ways to look at it. If we had a blank check, of course, the answer would be, let's move forward.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but do we have a blank check? So that would be the question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, whether or not these bills pass would also, is also going to play into that. Uh, if House Bill 423, if it passes through the Senate, then the state, uh, then essentially the Senate is saying, okay, now, Georgia, you have a statewide initiative, which means that, um, that we can leverage the entire state to say, okay, we know that we have to do this, so we need to make it cost-effective.
Right.
And that would be, of course, that would be very advantageous.
Correct.
And at some point, even if we decided to go on our own, we would still need to tie into the state's system so that, so that it does what it needs to do. Now, if House Bill 578 passes and there is actually a fee increase for, uh, 911, then that actually adds another layer to it because then what could we do, uh, based on that fee increase? When would it be implemented and all of those things? So it's several different factors that play into that. And we kind of have to see what happens through this legislative, uh, process to decide which direction we'd like to head in.
And I, and I get the drawbacks of being with the state or not being with the state. However, the, as the bigger picture, you know, that we're looking at, my thoughts would be, and I don't know if with yours aligning, to, to say, let's look at, definitely try to align with the state with the hopes of the fee increase. Because even if we got the, if the fee increase passes at the Senate, it still will be just another number to add to your coffe as an enterprise fund to kind of continue on with, cause the state is not gonna provide. to kind of continue on with, because the state is not going to provide everything.
No.
Yeah, so.
And they've made that very clear.
Yes. And the question is, how much will they be mandating based on the mere fact with the needs of this new E-911 setup, correct? So it's one of those, it's a give and take, and you don't really know kind of where you are. But it seems safe, safely said that to go closer and lean toward the state layout versus trying to do it on your own, because I think that cost could get astronomically high, and it could be a burden, at least on the, not on your coffer if the Senate bill passed. But if it doesn't, then it's going to be a, it could be problematic for this board, basically.
It could, and it will be with ESNET. It is widely known that it is a, it is a county-wide expense, that the 911 fees as they currently exist just will not, will not fund next generation 911 and ESNET.
Correct, correct. Well, just based on the, the new equipment, the fiber, the run, I mean, just a whole lot of unknowns.
Even the monthly expense is.
Yes.
Astronomical.
Yeah.
When you look at in terms of what we, we expense now, the monthly fees for ESNET are a great deal more expensive.
Wow, okay. And there was a unique situation with the sheriff and the routing of the calls. Where are we with that? Are we, or would this address that with the sheriff rerouting calls or the city? Somehow, I remember something, and I apologize, I don't know exactly how it was, that somehow the routing of the calls, there's a time lapse of some sort that has to be transferred based on either the sheriff or the city or somebody having their own bank of calls, I guess, or whatever.
Okay. So what you are referring to, we are the, the 911 center is the public safety answering point for the county.
Okay.
And so any, anytime someone dials 911 or texts 911, they will, that call will route into Douglas County 911.
Mm-hmm.
The sheriff's office operates what's called a secondary dispatch center. They are not a 911 center. And so anytime there is a call that requires law enforcement in those unincorporated areas of Douglas County, those calls have to then be transferred to the sheriff's office. This will not address that because ESNET is specifically for those public safety answering points. So this is specifically for those 911 centers to operate the business of 911.
Got it. So this one addressed that, and I'm assuming there's a need to address that because of the transfer? Or you thinking what we got and even going in this direction will still be above standard, I guess? Or at least it won't below, it won't be below standards of getting calls to and from? And, because the delay of a call could mean life or death?
Yes.
So.
So that is actually something that is a separate component of our emergency services in Douglas County. That essentially, this is, the next generation 911 specifically addresses that 911 infrastructure. And a secondary dispatch center is another, is another something altogether that will need to be addressed separately.
But it's not addressed in this particular setup?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I yield back, Madam Chair. Thank you again.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Any other questions? Madam Chair, you have the floor.
I'll just piggyback off what Commissioner Mitchell stated was, working with the state. We know there might be that lag time because government does not work fast. So do we also work with the state? Then also, after whatever is initiated by the state, then we would turn our, around and have to also do that at our county level. So there's going to, I feel like there's going to be some sort of time lag, but then there is going to be the benefit of the funding from the state. Because honestly, don't know, we'd actually find the five or eight million dollars that's going to need to initiate this on our own. And all of that, AT&amp;T, won't even tell us what the cost is in regards to the fiber. You know, in regards to what grade we have, what's the bandwidth now? How much is it going to cost? That is even an unknown through AT&amp;T right now. Am I correct?
That is correct. In essence, the fiber study is where the bulk of the expense will come from. And until they get into, or we say AT&amp;T, but there are other vendors as well. But until they get into the meat of what that fiber study looks like, they don't offer any cost for that until they, you know, get into the meat of that. They can, they can give us what it will cost afterwards. But as far as that, that fiber and that fiber study, that's another whole expense that they just don't give us that, that amount for.
Understood. And, but also, just looking at it, what we don't want to do is, we got that deadline. We now know the deadline time.
And we did not have it last year.
Right.
And we now have it.
So either one way or another, we're going, which I know the state's not going to allow us to, you know, everyone to be caught off-guard, and also now that the deadline hits and we're not, doesn't have everything implemented and up and going. However, we need to look at it and make sure at our level, at our county, regardless of this state. We now know that timeline, so this is something that the board's going to have to really look at and make a decision on, I think, pretty, pretty soon. Because it's, it's going to take a while for all these upgrades.
Yes.
And, you know, we have, are looking forward to, Director Harley and I are going to visit this North Carolina's facility here soon and get a good feel of how they set up everything and so that we can bring it back to the county and know when we need to, what I'm going to say, pull the trigger on and we know a timeline and also get us up to date. Because I don't like it when Alabama's ahead of us in regards to technology services.
Well, Alabama is where the first 911 call was made, in Haleyville, Alabama.
So we've got to catch up.
We, we do.
All right. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, thank you so much, Director Harley. All right, Board of Commissioners, we're going to move on. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda today? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
One second, please. Madam Chair, I do think we have an item. Dr. Corbin, do you want to add that item you emailed about? We have one item to add. Let me just get what it is. You have it?
Yes, ma'am. The item is, we have previously deferred this item, but we did not have a date on it, so we need to bring it back to this agenda. Resolution approving a moratorium on certain applications for computer infrastructure providers, data process, processing, web hosting, and related services, along with accessory structures and uses for 90 days for a review of the comprehensive plan and unified development code, as well as related documents and studies pending final legal review.
Okay. Clerk, did I hear you say 90 days?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay, I thought that's what we agreed on, but, all right. Board of Commissioners, let me try this again. Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the items stated by the clerk?
I'm sorry?
No, not you.
Oh, okay.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the items stated and added by the clerk? County clerk, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I believe then that will fail for lack of a motion.
Okay.
And so the agenda can seek a motion for approval without that item.
Okay, let me try it again. All right, Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve the agenda without the item?
So moved.
Okay, so moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, board? We have a motion and a second. Please indicate by raising your right hand if you agree. We have a three oh vote, and the motion carries. Okay?
I want to vote, Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm.
Just after that, so legal, just so we're clear. So what happens to that item that was kind of put out there for infinity? Basically, you know, that nothing was ever stated about that item, so I'm just curious.
Yes, unfortunately, until it can get majority approval to then reappear, it'll just stay out into.
Say no more. I just wanted to make sure that it was clearly stated. Okay, I yield back.
All right, thank you. Board of Commissioners, please, as a reminder, remember we have three minutes to make remarks and two minutes for any rebuttals. Approval of the minutes, board, next on the agenda. Just please be prepared tomorrow to approve or deny accordingly. And next, we have agenda items, and clerk, Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Thank you. Number four, under business items, approval of a resolution in support of establishing a fourth Superior Court judge for the Superior Court of Georgia of Douglas County, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. And we have Judge Cynthia Adams here to answer any questions.
Okay.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, Chief Judge Cynthia Adams on behalf of the Superior Court. Of course, we are very excited that we are once again in a position to have a fourth Superior Court judge added to our bench. It's much needed. Legislation passed the Senate on Friday, and so we are well on our way. That was Senate Bill 88, which passed the Senate, and we are headed to the House, and we know that we have great support as I've been spending a lot of time under the Gold Dome, making sure that we have the support needed for this bill to be successful and for us to be able to have this fourth Superior Court judge. The judicial council right now has us weighed at our three Superior Court judges doing the work of four and a half judges. And, you know, you hear a lot of what other counties are doing and what the workload assessment says for them. I believe as of 2022, we were at 2,000, over 2,000 cases per judge, which is a very large number. And now that number has increased. We are second in the ranking in the state of Georgia to have an additional judge. And so again, we welcome the support of our, of our county commissioners. We thank you for what you have done already, and we look forward to welcoming our fourth Superior Court judge to serve the citizens of Douglas County.
Thank you so much, Judge Adams. Board of Commissioners, we have any questions for Judge Adams? Any comments or remarks? All right. Uh-oh. Commissioner Mitchell, you have the floor.
So with that, fourth Superior Court judge, and, and thank you. It'll ease you guys and, and I guess move the court system along pretty quickly, I guess, and kind of shorten the caseloads of what you guys are doing, the count load of four and a half versus the three we have.
Well, you can imagine, Commissioner, if you have three judges and we are working Monday through Friday, and we have calendars just about, well, we do have calendars every day, and in addition to our regular caseload, we are all also presiding over accountability courts. And so those cases are not added to those numbers that we're talking about. And so there's only so many hours in the day. We can work as hard as we possibly can, as many days as we possibly can. But what ultimately will end up happening, if you don't have the bodies to handle the cases, if you don't have the judges, enough judges to handle those cases, then those cases are delayed. We have citizens who are wanting their, whether it's a civil case or a criminal case, placed on the calendar. We can't put all of these cases on the calendar because there's just not enough time in the day.
Right.
If we do have the sufficient amount of judges, I mean, already, like I said, we're doing the work of four and a half, so we already need more than four judges. But certainly, a fourth, a fourth judge would help us to be more efficient in moving the cases that are now before us.
And I'm going to pass on a, an ask, or how are we looking when it comes to that fourth judge? Like where, how, and then what that cost looks like? And is that strictly a state cost, or is that a local cost in addition to a state cost? Or kind of, can you give us that structure though with that?
We don't have an ideal, I mean, we can, the basis for our cost is what we're paying now for the position. The bigger issue for us is the recurring cost going forward and the space issue, right? We've been dealing with accommodations for all the growth that we've had in the courthouse the last couple of years, and we're going to have to address that going forward. And quite honestly, we don't have an answer for that right now.
But I guess we'll, if and when, if it makes it through the Senate, which we kind of, you feel confident that that's where it's going to end up as a, as a move forward and up vote. But with that being stated, though, then we need to look at, on the finance committee side of things, kind of how to start to look at that cost.
Agreed.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Judge Adams. We appreciate you.
Any other questions for the judge?
I yield back.
All right, thank you so much, Judge Adams.
Thank you all so much.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay. Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Number five is approval of an amended contract with Judicial Alternatives of Georgia, Inc., with no cost to the county for misdemeanor probation services for state court, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Judge Parker.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning, Judge.
Thank you for having me. Just briefly, as the clerk just said, this is an amendment to the contract. We use misdemeanor probation services with Judicial Alternatives of Georgia. Recently, they brought to our attention, and we do an annual contract with them. But they brought to our attention, the state agency that oversees them is the Department of Community Supervision, and they were audited recently, and their contract was included in that. And there is a provision in there where, under state regulations, they cannot have a contract that lasts longer than five years. Ours is basically set up as a revolving and reaffirming each year to roll over. And the state deemed that as being in excess of five years since there really wasn't a termination period for that. Although the contract contains a provision that at any time either side can get out within a 30-day notice, basically, to either time. The state regulations told JAG probation, they needed to amend this contract to conform with their requirements. So that's what this does. It only changes that provision. All other provisions in the contract will remain the same.
Thank you so much, Judge. Any questions for?
I just want to add, just one.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Thank you. Did legal, I mean, I know until final legal review pending upon that, I was just going to ask the question about legal. Did legal get a chance to kind of?
My understanding is they have approved that, they approved changes.
Yes, I'm just looking up that contract. I believe we made some changes to it and sent it back, and so we have seen it, yes.
We provided a copy of the state regulations to legal, and then I think they've approved that change.
And, and do they have to all line up like our, like we've got other contracts lining up annually, per year?
Yes, so this one is an annual one. We added, I just found it, this one has automatically renewable terms, successive one-year terms into December 31st, 2029. But it ends completely at the end of every year, December 31st, 2025. And then 2026, December 31st, December 31st, 2027, so on and so forth. And we are allowed an opportunity to terminate.
Right.
We usually always put a termination for our convenience. There's always a termination provision for default, right?
Yes.
But we want one for convenience, which would also include provided budgetary reasons don't allow us to continue the contract for the additional years.
And so, I think this is all good. It's lining up with our existing contracts, and is, is there a certain timeframe when, I know, is it automatically renewed or it ends and then, and then we have to revote it back in? I mean, I'm just trying to make sure how that.
Auto, so unless you terminate with providing the written notice.
Correct.
Within the required timeframe.
What's that timeframe?
Thirty days.
Okay, okay.
Prior to the date of expiration. So December 1st, technically, you would have to give notice that we're not going to renew this.
Okay.
It won't automatically renew in the January 1st of the next year.
So is that giving notice? Is us giving notice as a board, or is that?
No, you would have to vote. So we're not authorized.
That's what I'm alluding to.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
You would have to vote. Yes, sir.
Yeah, if we, for some reason, if we became not happy with the services being provided, we could bring that to the board. It's basically, one of my duties is to be responsible for finding the appropriate probation provider for the state court.
You answered my next question, because were we going to get the info? Because we wouldn't know, you know, if they're doing a good job or not.
So far, since we've had this probation company, they've done a really good job. Should that change for some reason in the future, and we felt like a change would be needed, we would bring that back to the board.
So you'll. So you'll put us on notice before December one, using that as an example?
Absolutely.
Yes. That way, we won't miss the cutoff mark, and then you're stuck with them for another year.
Right.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure. Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Judge. Your back.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Any other questions for? Okay, you have the clerk read it, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Judge Parker has the next one as well. It's the same contract, but for Superior Court.
Yeah, thank you. Judge Adams, you want me to handle this?
That's fine. It's the exact, I'm sorry, it's the exact same information that Judge Parker just presented. Of course, misdemeanor probation does most of its work in state court, but we do have cases as well where misdemeanor probation has to do work with Superior Court. So it's the exact same information, the exact same contract.
Yeah, and the same layout, what we just spoke about?
Same layout.
Okay, all right. I'm good. I'm good.
Any questions? We're good. Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next up.
Yes, ma'am. Number seven, approval for, we need to change this renewal to just a new contract, approval of a new contract with Correct Health and the Douglas County Sheriff's Office in the amount of five million nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, of which three point three million five hundred and thirty-nine thousand one hundred dollars is to be funded from the sheriff's twenty-twenty-five general fund budget, and two million four hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars is to be funded by general fund balance to cover inmate medical costs in infirmary and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Chief Connor.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chief.
Where do I start?
I don't know.
So I guess we can kind of go back to our budget retreat from last year, where we let the board know that the cost of business in the inmate healthcare was going up. So our current twenty-four contract was three point six million, and what they're, what they proposed for renewal was four point eight. The board was aware, we put it out for bid because among one issues, the, out of the companies that submitted a bid, the evaluation committee looked at them and selected this company as the best of the ones that had put in. When the bids were unsealed, they come in at five point six. There was another company that came in that was a little lower, but basically, they said, if we get this contract, we'll start a business. They, you know, they haven't got any experience in this, and the couple of them didn't comply. And then the next one, from my understanding, was about nine million for this contract. So when we, when the sheriff met with Correct Health and started discussing our needs and the shortfall, and we felt that we were receiving, they agreed on a five point nine, or come to an agreement that hasn't been concluded, of five point nine nine seven, and that was based on adding infirmary. Basically, it's more staffing. So the majority of this extra money is staffing. So basically, they go by hours of service, so it's going to sound a little strange, but with our three point six million dollar contract, we had seventeen point oh five full-time employees. With the four point eight renewal proposal, it was twenty point oh four full-time employees. With the bid that come in, it was twenty-two point seven five full-time employees, and the five point nine is at twenty-six point seven full-time employees. So you see it's a significant amount of hours that relate to full-time employees compared to the services that we're currently getting. I would note that I appreciate our procurement director reaching out to some other jurisdictions, and based on what I see that he's provided, the next closest facility as far as the average daily population. So the contract's based on us having eight hundred inmates. If we go over eight hundred inmates, there's an additional cost. He has them at nine hundred and seventy-five, which is the closest, and according to them, they're paying ten point two, almost ten point three for their contract. So y'all do know that we have entered into an agreement to house the city of Douglasville's inmates, and that's ongoing, and the current bill hasn't been received yet, but the prior six months were averaged, and that we're getting from the city of Douglasville in return about seven hundred and three thousand. So that's in return from their, our housing their inmates. We included the inmate healthcare contract in the price of the average, the daily amount they pay. So with this, there will be a submitted increase to the city to continue to house the inmates, which would, in return, bring some of this money back. So the twenty-five, twenty-four contract was three point six. We were actually only budgeted three point five, so there was underfunding of our previous contract for a hundred thousand dollars under twenty-five budget, actually a hundred and nine thousand, almost a hundred and ten thousand. So that's where we come up with the figures of the five point nine nine seven. We got the three point five three nine currently in our budget for the inmate healthcare, and then the two point four coming from the general fund in order to fund this new contract. I will add real quickly that we did put this before the Finance Committee and had a very robust conversation about it, and I felt at least when we come out of there that the county administrator and two of the commissioners saw the writing on the wall with this contract and felt that this was in our best interest.
Any?
No, ma'am.
You finished? Okay. I have a question just to start off before certainly ask the board. How many inmates does the jail hold? How many total?
It will hold fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred. So this amount is based on eight fifty?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
Yes, ma'am.
So you've got a cap now that you're going to continue to hold that cap, or if you expand out, maybe perhaps you maybe at one point, we may have a thousand inmates, so.
Well, so when we moved from the old jail, we had over eight hundred, probably close to nine hundred inmates. Something happened with some reform during that time, during the time the jail was being built, and we have crept up to eight hundred since, what, in the twelve years that we've had the facility knock on wood. Currently, we're running about six hundred and fifty inmates, average daily population. So we're below, and, you know, we do have, the sheriff has the authority to release inmates that served a certain amount of their sentence. So we kind of try to keep that below that amount best we can. But to answer your question, it don't seem like it's trending very much, and I will put out there that even though the facility was built for fifteen hundred, even at full staff, we don't have the ability to be able to watch that many inmates.
And I know sometimes occasionally, we contract maybe with other counties, contract with us for beds, space, or capacity. Will they absorb some of this cost if we exceed that eight hundred? If, you know, if you, maybe, I'm just going to throw out a county, if you negotiate something with the cap where they need their inmates to come to Douglas and for just temporary timeframe, will they absorb some of this cost?
Absolutely. We would use that as a consideration of what the daily fee would be, but as I stated, there's nothing in the foreseeable future where we would be able to rent out our jail
Yeah, rent out, yeah.
because of our manpower issues.
Okay. Thank you. Board of Commissioners, we have any questions for our Chief Connors? Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, yes, the Finance Committee did have a nice round or two with this, and I think this is probably the best we've got thus far. I mean, not that we all totally agreed, but it was a round that we did, and I think this is probably the best take based on what we got to deal with at this moment. So, and the other part I will say, though, too, though, is I know this is not your goal, and I hope it's not your goal, is to try to get fifteen hundred inmates in the jail. So we're not working to increase heads and beds. We're hoping to decrease that number, so we hopefully won't ever get beyond eight hundred or beyond six hundred. I'm hoping that, you know, that with what you and the sheriff and all you guys do, that you guys keep crime at bay.
Well, you know, that's one of the factors.
You can't determine that now. Right, yes, you can't control that, yes.
But if we go by the past.
Yes.
And then looking into the future. Six fifty, seven hundred.
Right.
Is where we've been running, you know, for a few years now.
Right.
Even, I think even at COVID, we got to where we let some folks out that were, like I said, the sheriff had the authority to do, and maybe got it down to four hundred at that time, and so.
Well, I know you guys do a great job, so let's try to keep that number at bay and try to do, because I think we've got various programs within the county that we know that can hopefully help us get away from that revolving door of, at the sheriff's office.
And absolutely, and just adding the new Superior Court judge will help the judicial system move some of these inmates along as well. So it all works as one machine, and when they're able to move cases, we're able to let people out, because we're just a holding facility until they have finished their judicial process.
Okay, all right. Well, outside of that, I mean, job well done. I just want to make sure that, you know, that's not the goal, and that is to put more heads in beds, you know, so.
Not till we get more staff.
I would agree. I would agree. Okay. And I don't know, David, if you want to kind of talk through that whole layout that we was at the Finance Committee, kind of, how do we get, come to this resolve based on the numbers? And I guess the other part will be, kind of, where are these funds going to come from, I guess I'll add.
Yeah, right now, as the resolution states, it's coming out of our fund balance. We appropriated, the board appropriated, as the resolution says, about three and a half million dollars in the current budget. This addition is not part of our recurring revenue as of today. So it will come out of fund balance, assuming that the board, when the millage rate discussion occurs.
Understood.
Will have to roll this in going forward for twenty-six.
But we covered, but we're covered right now to get through twenty twenty-four?
Twenty twenty-five.
Five, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-five.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, okay. All righty, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
You know, I have one more, several questions for you, Chief. You have any?
No, I'm good.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Okay. Vice Chair, you have the floor.
Is there a possibility, if we got down to four hundred, housing four hundred, three hundred, is there a chance that this number could come down in the next year's contract with this fourth judge coming on? You just made that statement. We can maybe get this process going in regards to the inmates. If that population was to drop, is there a potential for this contract price to also drop?
Well, there's the potential, but I would be very cautious in proceeding to reduce that eight hundred number without some good data behind it. You know, one year with the judicial system moving along, I wouldn't feel comfortable. Actually, every year, they try to lower that themselves, because they, up until this year, if they got to the eight hundred, I was told, they were actually losing money, and I fought with them for years to keep it at the eight hundred. And as a matter of fact, when they submitted this renewal, the four point eight, they had reduced it to seven hundred, and I had to wait a minute, you know, so there's the potential there, but I would caution the board to have several years of data behind it before we attempted to lower that top-out number. And that top-out number is just, if you go over this amount, then it's a little bit more a day per inmate, two dollars, two seventy-nine, two dollars seventy-nine a day or something. So that's what that eight number, eight hundred number relates to.
And just so, because I know where we all here, a lot of citizens don't know this, but we're mandated to provide this service, correct?
This is sheriff's constitutional duty to take care of the inmates in this case.
All right. I'll go back, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. I think he stole the words out of my mouth, but I was going to even take it a step further and say, would it be an opportunity for credit at the end of the year if you don't exceed your threshold of eight hundred in terms of the contract? I'm just, that's just a question.
Yeah, no, ma'am, the eight hundred is just a cap to let us know if you go over eight hundred, we're going to charge you more.
Okay.
It's not a.
And the infirmary, can you speak to the resources, not necessarily resources, that there's services that would be provided in the infirmary?
So my, so we have, the building was built as to have an infirmary. Basically, what it's going to do is it's going to add, I believe it was two nurses per shift, there's four shifts, that they're dedicated to that area where the worst of the worst inmates as far as health conditions are housed. Prior to that, the people that are watching them now get pulled away to go do pill pass, they get pulled away to go check people in, they're coming in the jail. This is supposed to be a dedicated team to oversee those in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Chief. Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Thank you. Number eight, approval of twenty twenty-five equitable sharing agreement and certification for the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. Authorize Jennifer Ferguson to sign electronically and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Lieutenant Colonel Pounds.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is the annual audit that we're required to perform by the federal government for funds received and funds dispersed as it relates to asset forfeitures. Madam Chair and the sheriff will sign the paper documents that will be kept on file, but the signatures have to be submitted electronically. We're seeking authorization for our accounting manager, Jennifer Ferguson, to submit Madam Chair's signatures as we've done in the past.
Commissions, have any questions? Okay, no questions for you, Lieutenant Colonel.
Okay. Number nine, approve a contract with Shelley Kimball for case management services for inmates in the jail's reentry substance abuse counseling program to be fully funded by the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Lieutenant Colonel Pounds.
So this is Captain Samantha Arnold, and of course, you know, Sister Shihana, our grant writer, and they will present this one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Douglas County Sheriff's Office is requesting board approval of a contract with Ms. Shelley Kimball for case management services for inmates in the jail reentry substance abuse counseling program. This contract is fully funded by the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council per our comprehensive opioid stimulant and substance abuse program grant, approved and accepted by the board at the Tuesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four Board of Commissioners meeting. Ms. Kimball will work a maximum of twenty-five hours per week at an hourly rate of twenty-two dollars and ninety-five cents until August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. The contract value is fifty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. Ms. Kimball will follow, document, and report the progress of each inmate in the substance abuse counseling program through their journey to sobriety and ultimately for their successful reentry into our community.
Okay, thank you so much, Captain Arnold. Any questions for Captain? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Number ten is approval to purchase three ambulances from Frazier LTD in the amount of one million one hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars to be funded by the twenty twenty-two SPOLOST Fund and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Chief Allen.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chief.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioner, important administration. The Douglas County Fire Department is requesting permission to, requesting your approval to purchase two ambulances in the amount of one million one hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Okay. Any questions for? Okay. Chief, I have one.
No, you can go ahead.
Okay, I just have one regarding the two, you say the two new ambulances or three?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I see three.
I'm sorry, three, three. I apologize.
I thought my eyes were playing tricks on me. This will help replenish our. I thought my eyes were playing tricks on me. This will help replenish our aging fleet, or can you?
Yes, ma'am, this is, this is, uh, they're going to go as frontline, and the ones we do have will go as reserves. Currently, eighty percent of our ambulance fleet has more than two hundred thousand miles on it, so as these things start to age, we're going to start to try to do our best to replace. And the ones that are old, um, either we, we cherry pick them, or we, uh, we keep them as reserves.
Yeah, okay. So this would give us a total of how many, many ambulances, Chief?
Oh, my goodness, uh.
You can call me a little later.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you can just tell me later, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Mitchell, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, and this is for three, but that's the total of one point one two five in numbers. That's the total of what you need for all three?
Yes, sir.
Or is that, oh, okay, that's for all three. Okay. What happens with the, those that, you, you're putting these in the, in the fleet? What happens to the ones that you kind of release out of the fleet? Do you, do you kind of pass them on to?
No, they'll, 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 they'll stay in the fleet. Like I said, eighty percent of our, of our ambulances have over two hundred thousand miles on them. The years on them are, are still within the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen year, uh,
Okay.
fifteen age, but we still are going to keep them within the reserves. We always have to have reserve ambulances.
So they go into the fleet, whether you park them, however, wherever you're parking those guys, but this will be an additional three
Yes, sir.
in your fleet?
Yes, sir.
Got it, got it. Okay, okay. Good, okay, well, all right, that, that's all I've had. And, and is that totally with the wrapping and all that good stuff of the ambulance?
No, sir, that, most of that is going to have to come out of our, our operating budget.
And you have that in your budget, too?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because I want to kind of account for that, because I always kind of get, that gets lost. We, we buy this, or we do this, and we build the building, not understanding the operating cost of what that looks like and what that costs. So I just want to make sure that that's in your budget to kind of take care of that cost.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Any questions, any other? Okay. Madam Clerk.
Number eleven, approval to purchase two Pierce Custom Cab pumper truck, fire trucks from Ten Eight Fire and Safety LLC in the amount of one million, seven hundred thousand dollars to be funded by the fire department budget as an approved twenty twenty-five Patsy and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Chief Allen.
So in addition, it's pretty much similar to the ambulance, uh, issue, so, uh, these two vehicles are at a very good price, but we're looking at with Pierce, there's going to be kind of like stock vehicles, but it, the additions that we have to add to the vehicles are going to take at least twelve to fourteen months.
Okay. Any questions for regarding the pumper fire trucks?
Just, just one, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Mitchell?
So, so, and I, I want to go back to the other one. The funds for the ambulance is, uh, out of the SPOS dollars, and we do have the funds in that. I apologize, I'm going backwards here. We do have the funds in that to, to take care of that.
Correct, he's still within his allocation.
Good, good. And, and these dollars here, the one point seven, uh, out of his, the, out of, out of your budget, you're clear with that, that's a, that number's in your budget?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. I see now, heads nodding, so that's, I see the finance guys nodding their heads, and everybody's working. Yeah, that's a good sign. Okay, thank you, and I yield back.
Okay. Vice Chair, you have the floor. Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell.
Quite a few vehicles we're swapping out here, um, with our ones that are coming out of service. Do we got somewhere we can store those, to keep those where they're not weathered and stay in good, pristine, good shape?
As, as we sit today, Commissioner, uh, our vehicles are sitting outside. Uh, I am diligently trying to find places to house these vehicles. Our current, current situation with our fire stations, they only hold what the fire stations were meant to hold, and that's currently what we use. Uh, right now, our ambulances are sitting at our headquarters. Uh, at times, the engines are sitting at motor pool. But because of the way that, you know, the weather is, uh, it does cause us, cause us some issues for aesthetics and even our tools and equipment that sit on the vehicles that are exposed to the weather. So we do need to find a place to store and house the current vehicles that we do have that is not being covered by the weather.
Okay. Um, I know we had talked about that at one time or two, that's probably something that I think that the board's going to have to look at in the very near future, because that's a lot of money sitting out there, uh, and allowing the, you know, the weather to take its toll on our vehicles and our equipment. So, uh, even if we just build a big, empty, just storage house, but something to take care of a lot of our cars or equipment that's not being used at that time. I yield back, I yield back, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chair. Yeah, we've had that conversation. You're still looking, or is there some type of apparatus out there that we can build, or?
I'm just looking for, I'm looking for lots, I'm looking for warehouses, I'm looking for hangars. We do have, you know, Station Nine that is going to be coming onboard in May or June, and our engine for Station Nine is already here, so once that thing gets ready to go, it's going to be sitting outside until Station Nine is, is complete. So, yes, ma'am, we're still doing a, doing a lot of looking around.
Okay, right. I know, uh, Vice Chair, you're in certainly lead public safety, I know you're working on it. Okay, thank you. All right, no more questions. Madam Clerk?
Okay. Number twelve, approval of the contract with UES Professional Solutions Eighteen LLC in the amount of thirty-three thousand dollars for the construction special inspections of the Fairburn Road Senior Center to be funded by twenty twenty-two SPOS funds and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Conswella Gilchrist.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioner Mitchell, and Administration. Yes, the results of this survey will essentially provide the, um, necessary answer to several pertinent questions. How much rock will be removed, how much soil will be, will be needed, and the, um, amount of compaction that will be needed for the site.
Okay, any questions for? Thank you so much, Dr. Gilchrist. Any questions? Okay, I have one question for you. You said the soil removal. What about soil testing? Has that been done?
Yes, ma'am, we're, um, they will also test the soil and do, um, the geotechnical.
Please, okay. All right, I have no further questions. Thank you so much, Dr. Gilchrist. All right. Tab number thirteen. Madam Clerk.
Approval of a memorandum of understanding between the West Georgia Regional Library System and the Douglas County Board of Commissioners to place a book locker and book return at Boundary Waters Activity Center located at forty-nine ninety-six Highway Ninety-two, Douglasville, Georgia, three oh one three five, at no cost to the county, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Lindy Moore.
Good morning. So this will place a book locker at Boundary Waters. Um, originally, this book locker was going to be placed at Selman Library, but due to our construction that's pending, and we decided to place it somewhere else, so that was still accessible. This, it's around twenty-two thousand dollars, um, for the book locker, no cost to the county. This is all through the regional library system, through some state, um, technology purchases. Um, so you might ask, what is a book locker?
Yes.
A book locker is similar to, um, an Amazon pickup locker. If you've seen those, they are, um, accessible after library hours. So folks that might have books on hold, or you can place holds on items to be picked up at the locker instead of at the library to allow for twenty-four hour access types of things. We're excited about placing it here at Boundary Waters, because it is further away from any of our libraries. It's not a served area as much. It's at least a good twenty minutes away from any of our current libraries. So this will provide, um, library access, um, to folks down at Boundary Waters. And we do hope to install further book lockers throughout the county, um, through the coming years.
Wow, that's great. Any questions for?
I do, I just have one.
Mm-hmm.
Just, just.
Commissioner Mitchell?
So thanks for explaining what a book locker is. I, I kind of thought I knew, but I did, so that's pretty good. Will that one that's going out west, would it actually be returned once the Selman Library is completed and all done? Or would there be an additional one that the, the library board will be adding to that, or is there a need for it? I don't know, just curious.
We, the one at Boundary Waters will stay at Boundary Waters.
Okay.
We do plan on adding an additional one at the Selman Library, that's part of the renovation. Uh, we do plan on adding that, and seeing how those two work will, um, potentially add, um, other, uh, lockers at other locations.
And, and is this like a physical locker, bricked in, and, you know?
Yes, it will be mounted, um, to the concrete, um, so it's, it's not going anywhere.
Got it, and, and I'm assuming it protects itself from rain and all the other stuff when you put the books in?
Yes.
Okay, and it's like a, um, more of a mailbox or something, where you kind of drop them in, or?
There will be a slot for book returns, and it's completely covered, and the others, you will enter in your library card number, or, I'm not, I haven't been trained yet, so I'm not exactly sure how it opens up, but you'll either enter a code or enter your library card number, and your, the locker that your items are in will pop open, and you'll be able to get your items out.
So your team will be actually putting the books in. If I happen to put one on, put you guys on notice that I wanted a book, then you guys will put it in there. If I come after hours, put my library card in, it'll open, and, and I get the book out and keep, okay.
Yes, and we'll, um, we'll have books, you can put laptops on hold, your hotspots, you can also pick up those through the book lockers, and we will be servicing it, um, two or three days a week, so we'll be constantly working on that.
And that library board, the West Georgia Regional Library, got, they will actually be funding the one potentially that's coming to Selman if?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. I yield back, thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Any other questions? How's the Bookmobile going, Director?
The Bookmobile is ready to go. We should be announcing our ribbon cutting and our mascot naming cer- um, ceremony will be mid-March, so that's coming.
All right, okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Number fourteen is approval of a contract with Civic Plus in the amount of four thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents to be funded through the EMA budget for the creation and maintenance of a department header website for emergency management within Douglas County webpage and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. James Queen.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is a conversation that I started last year with Communications Director, Yvette Jones, about creating a webpage specifically for emergency management. She brought up going through Civic Plus to just create a new header page to use. Um, I've been talking with them. The information that would be involved with this is things like our hazard mitigation plan and all of the updates that are going on, where we keep that posted and updated there, um, as well as allow for the public comment that has to be a part of that, uh, process. Also, we are looking to expand our CERT team here in Douglas County, so we would include more information regarding that program as well as just general information about emergency management and how people can be better prepared.
Thank you so much, Director. Any questions for Director Queen? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Madam Clerk?
Number fifteen, approval of a non-disclosure agreement with the Georgia Emergency Communications Authority for access to the nine-one-one fee reporting portal and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Katrina Harley.
Good morning again. This is simply a procedural, uh, change, uh, on behalf of the Georgia Emergency Communications Authority. They are requesting the entity responsible for committing the county to contracts to sign, uh, the non-disclosure agreement so that we have access to, uh, the fee portal for nine-one-one fees.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, Director Harley.
Thank you.
For the Commissioners, any questions for Director?
All right, thank you.
Number sixteen, approval to execute Y twenty-five dash eight dash zero one one Juvenile Justice Incentive Grant-funded Agreement for services contract for Lisa Durea Johnson for, as facilitator for grant-funded youth programming and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Jennifer King.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning. We had some contracts not too long ago in front of the board that were approved. This one is to replace a facilitator who resigned recently, so same information, same contract. It is all grant-funded, and she provides programming for her at-risk youth.
Okay, any questions for, for Director King? You have any questions? All right, thank you.
Number seventeen is approval of an amended agreement for services contract with Recovery Unlimited LLC and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Jennifer?
This was also one of those contracts, um, however, we had to go in and amend some of the, uh, the rates that had changed that were not in that contract.
Okay. Any questions for, for Director King?
Just, just one.
Commissioner Mitchell?
So, did, did the numbers change? I mean, is everything?
They did, just a little bit. Um, it was the updated rates of, of each service. Maybe like between ten, twenty dollar increase, and there was one that was added, um, for a psychiatry service that they're providing. Um, that was just inadvertently left out of that first round.
So, just a nominal increase?
Yes.
Okay, and, and I'm assuming our county manager is, you know, kind of fully aware where these numbers are, how much that costs, whatever the adjustments are recovered?
I don't have the specific detail, but it's, it's well within their, their, their allocation.
Okay.
Budget allocation.
Okay, all right, because I want to make him responsible for it. Thank you, I yield back.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Director King.
Number eighteen, approval to accept a change order with Bartow Paving LLC in the amount of eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety cents in connection with Post Road at I twenty interchange project to be funded from SPOS twenty twenty-two fund and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Solomon Rana.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board, and County Administration. Uh, Post Road at I twenty is a SPOS twenty-two project with the Phase Three currently under construction. Uh, the proposal is to add four turning lanes on each approach of the interchange. Uh, we bid the contract in December of last year. Uh, recently, we identified a line item that was missing from our initial quantity takeoff, but it is required for, uh, implementation on the site per the approved design, uh, or the plans. Uh, the item missing is referred to as Orange Barrier Fence, OBF. We need about twenty-five hundred linear feet of that fence, uh, in project limits. The cost is exactly the cost, uh, per G-dots mean, uh, cost, which is the cost we would have paid if, even if it was included in the initial bid. Uh, with that, we're recommending this change order for your approval. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for, for our managing director? Okay.
Number nineteen, approval to submit an application for electronic payment processing request for DOT utility permit fees with Payroc and no, with no impact to the budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Solomon Rana.
Uh, so DOT is currently working on digitalizing our utility permitting process. Towards end of last year, the board approved a contract with a vendor called Iwerx. Uh, we're currently in implementation phase with that vendor. Payroc serves as their subcontractor, who will solely be responsible for payment processing of the permits. Um, this comes to us at no cost. There will be credit card processing fee charged to the applicants. With that, uh, we recommend this for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Managing Director Rana. Any questions for our managing director? Pretty straightforward, thank you. All right.
Okay, number twenty.
Madam Clerk.
Number twenty is approval of a change order with Max Air Mechanical not to exceed fifty thousand dollars for plumbing, ventilation, and piping renovation project at the Douglas County Animal Shelter to be funded by the incorporate, unincorporated fund balance and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Vanessa Franczekowski.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Work Commissioners, County Administrators. Um, come before you today just to go ahead and ask for permission for a change order not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Uh, this goes with the, uh, one point four million that we had requested and was approved, um, through you guys for the, um, renovations to the shelter. During the renovations, we've, um, found additional problems. The most of this problem is a sanitary belly that was found in our piping underneath the building. Um, it is about five feet of sewage that is just sitting underneath the building. Um, it looks like when they built the building, there were some slopes, and they didn't account for that. Uh, so this would correct that issue, which has caused some flooding in our issues prior to, um, with sewage issues. Uh, we do have a change order for a lint interceptor. This would be above ground. This is basically the sanitation line that pulls from our, um, washer and dryer machines. This way, we'll not back up our sewage system. Uh, the last one that I just received, I apologize, I just received this yesterday, or I'm sorry, Friday afternoon, um, prior to close. Uh, this is standalone controls, and this would be for the ventilation units to go ahead and tie everything over, um, make sure the temperatures all sync up, just because we have that dedicated air system outside. If the temperature is not synced up between inside and outside, uh, we're going to have some humidity issues. And all of this should not exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Any questions for our director?
I don't have any, no.
Without, don't have any questions, Director? Without, don't have any questions, Director?
Thank you.
All right.
Number 21, authorize the chairman to sign a letter of commitment for the Boundary Waters Park Outdoor Pool and Splash Pad Project pending final legal review. Chad Griffin.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners and County Administration. We are in the process of filling out a grant with Georgia DNR and the grant's called Outdoor Recreation Legacy Partnership Grant. We're filling out the grant for a six-lane outdoor pool in a splash pad area and part of the application requires us to get support, a support letter from the county and we reached out on Thursday asking for support. So this is what we're working on right now.
Thank you, Director Griffin.
For clarifying. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Question?
Just one here. So what, what's the cost or is, is there a cost or is, are we having to deal with any particular cost with this?
So right now, we're, we're still working on the budget sheet. The grant's due March 14th. What the, what we're going to do in the grant that allows you to use the land as a matching fund? So we're going to use the land as the matching fund for the grant.
Got it, okay. So this is a grant that you're applying for and the matching in kind will be land and anything else that, that to kind of offset that...
Yes, sir.
...potential, particular, potential cost?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all righty. And I guess we're, in the meanwhile, we're just waiting to see if the grant is approved. We're not going to move until we get the, okay.